Okay, you ready? All right. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge. The pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bill Lopez.
Here.
Laura Madigan.
Here.
James Byrd.
Here.
John Craft.
Here.
Kelly Karaman.
Here.
Lovely. We do have a quorum. Therefore, can move on to approval of minutes from August 12. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Don. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Bill. Any corrections or notes to make? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, those minutes are approved. Next, we've got consideration of claims and sewer adjustments. Do we have a motion to approve the claims this month?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Corinne on the claims? Hearing none, we'll move on. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, claims are approved. Now, we've got petitions and comments from the floor. If you have something that you've come to this meeting to address the council on, please approach the podium and state your name and address. All right, seeing no one approach, we are going to move on to reports. Clerk Treasure.
I just want to mention that we have a redesigned website coming soon. Indiana Office of Technology is gonna start on it at the beginning of September. After a couple of weeks, they'll be training, and the department heads are all gonna be able to log in and change stuff, right? So, I will be communicating with everybody on that. But October, it should switch over to the new website. Perfect, that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Our attorney is out tonight, but available via phone conference if we should need to call him. Police Chief Dickey.
Got two quick things. The first is an assemblage permit for the field station frenzy 5K trail run and walk on October 5th from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. All documents in order, and I'm requesting council permission to have that approved.
I'll make that motion. Thank you. We've got a motion to approve the field stations 5K frenzy on October 5th, seconded by Don. Thank you so much. Any questions for the chief on this event? All right, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
The second thing is, you should find a packet in front of you. One of our officers, Matt Reynolds, was a former commercial motor vehicle enforcement officer with Porter County Sheriff's Department, and he's very seasoned in that field. He has brought something to my attention regarding our ordinance on overweight vehicle restrictions. Basically, wrote the policy that county has adopted and is presenting the same thing to me. So, we are in the beginning stages of this, but this is something that we're hoping to move forward with and utilizing this.
Thank you so much. Until... Please pass my thanks on to Officer Reynolds for this. I love seeing suggested ordinance changes from our departments that work with them. I appreciate that very much.
Yep, that's all I have.
Thanks. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this before moving on? All right, we'll move on to Fire Department. Chief Craig.
The only thing I have is our July stats. We ran 117 calls in July, which is our second busiest month on record, second to last July, which brought us to 602 calls year-to-date. Last year, same timeframe, we're at 575 calls for the year. So, we're on a busier year. July, we averaged 3.7 calls a day, and we spent an average of 56 minutes on each call. Again, that does not count our return to station or station cleanup, with a total of 145 hours and 22 minutes on emergency calls. Forty-five calls during the day, 60 calls in the afternoon, and 12 of those calls were at night, with our busiest day being Thursday, for the 25 of those calls were on Thursdays. Sixty-two in the town of Porter, 18 in Westchester Township, three in Boone Acres, and 34 auto aid, mutual aid calls. Busiest day was July 4th with 10 calls that day, nine calls on the 10th and nine calls on the 29th. Seven, I'm sorry, 15% of the time, we were on multiple calls at once, which was 17 different calls. And the big numbers on those, 49 of those was medical calls. There was 12 reported dive emergencies. Not all of them resulted in a actual dive call. We had five search for missing person on land. Plus our auto aid, our... Excuse me, 34 mutual aid calls. I think that is it. We had three people start the fire academy in July. Look forward to them being, completing that training in December, being released to go on calls. I know I had something else that's escaping me. The part-time program has been going extremely well, which unfortunately ends on Friday.
That was so fast.
Time, very fast, we buy very fast. Our time, we said we'd do between Labor Day and Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Sorry, Memorial Day and Labor Day. And we hit right at the amount of money that was allotted for us, so. It's where we sit. I think that is... We had our 5K over the weekend. Thank you, everybody that came out and participated in that. It's a great little fundraiser for us. And with our budgeting coming up here, that money now is going to make a huge difference in our equipment purchases and stuff in the future, since we don't have a lot of room for growth. We do have the Porter's Perfect Pint coming up. I'm sure Brian will elaborate on that much more than I will. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions for the chief? Then we'll move on to Public Works Superintendent Spanier.
The thing I have tonight is we'll be pouring some curbs on Beam Street from our repair the other night, and another missing piece that's been there for years. Took longer than we thought, 'cause our concrete company got sold to somebody, and they couldn't find paperwork for our account. So, they're fine. We're finally good to go, and it'll get done tomorrow. That's a new thing we're doing that I think they do a pretty good job, you know, for in-house stuff, smaller things. But that's all I got.
Okay, thank you so much. Parks Department, Mr. Bogaiwski.
I've just got one request, and that is for the council to approve one free shelter rental and one free building rental of the community building to use as auction items in the silent auction for this year's Porter's Perfect Pint. We usually do that every year, and they're popular items that we usually get a little bit more than what they go for normally.
Oh, that's nice. I love hearing that. Do we have a motion to approve a free shelter rental and a free building rental to be donated for the Porter's Perfect Pint auction?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Brian, or, sorry, thank you, Bill. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Brian? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, I also have a thank you to the Chesterton Fire Department, Chief Craig and Corinne for facilitating the transfer of that ATV. It took two afternoons, elbow grease, and she's up and running and like brand-new.
Yay!
We really appreciate it, and thank you for helping us out, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Building depart, Building Commissioner, Director of Development, Mr. Berry.
I have two items. One is 10 contractors who paid their fees and met all their requirements for your approval.
Do we have a motion to approve 10 contractors that have paid all their fees and met all the requirements?
Some of them.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions for Mike? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The contractors are approved.
Item two is, I got a quote from Circle R Electric to replace the lamps of the lights on Worthington Drive for, excuse me, $1,308. They fixed the wiring and traced it back to the lift station, and just to replace the lamps so that they operate correctly with LED lights. It's $1,308. And I'd like to get that done, 'cause then we'll have lights on the road like we should.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve 1308 paid to Circle R Electric for the lights?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll second.
Thank you, Don. Any questions for Mike on this? You have a budget line for that to be paid out of, sir? Or Corinne does? Someone has that in mind, I assume, already?
Not yet, but I'll find one.
So, we can volunteer there for miscellaneous services. We'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you so much. Did you catch that one, Corinne?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike? Did I already ask that? Okay, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right.
All right.
Thanks so much. Okay, now we get to move on to old business, 2026 budgets. Corinne, would you like to, pretty please?
Sure. So, after the last meeting, there were some adjustments made to each department budget. So, you have a printout of Form 1. I used the printout from Gateway, so it's all condensed, and there's not a bunch of empty lines. It's not gonna be in the same order you had before, but, you know, same totals. I also emailed you those spreadsheets, too, if you prefer the other version better. Cash flow document has been updated to reflect those numbers. I've also updated a couple of minor things as far as the estimated tax rates for each fund. The overall tax rate, obviously. CCD fund adjustment, that's to give more an exact levy for the maximum of 5 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. Debt service was updated also, but the rest of it is pretty much the same from the last version that you received. And you also have a draft Form 3, which is gonna be our notice to taxpayers of the budget hearing and adoption meeting. So, the column number two is a budget estimate. Those totals are gonna match what is on the Form 1 for each department. Keep in mind, the general fund is a combination of general government and the police department. Motor Vehicle Highway is gonna be Motor Vehicle Highway Unrestricted and Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted.
Okay.
And then, column three is the maximum estimated funds to be raised, so that's our tax levy. Those numbers are inflated, and they're inflated on purpose, just because we wanna advertise higher than what we're actually gonna collect, so we don't leave any money on the table.
Can I ask about the MVH? I see column three is a higher number than its partner in column two, except for MVH.
Which, I'm sorry, what are you looking at? You're looking at the...
I'm looking at the Form 3.
Sorry, yeah, under Motor Vehicle.
Yeah, under Motor Vehicle, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 down.
So, the levy for, the property tax levy for Motor Vehicle Highway is gonna be roughly $717,205. That number that you see on the Form 3 is added about 15% for that cushion, again, so we advertise higher.
Right.
MVH gets revenue from an MVH distribution also, so it's not just property tax levy.
That's why that number... Okay, thank you. I interrupted you for a question before you were done with everything. I apologize.
Ready for questions.
Okay. Any other questions? That was my only one.
So, I mean, once we're, the council's comfortable with all these numbers, tomorrow, I am going to just ask the department heads to give one final check on their Form 1s. And I will also have Baker Tilly just do one more final check before we submit the advertisement, 'cause once it's submitted, that's it.
Okay.
We're on the path to having a hearing on the 9th.
We're on the path to having a hearing on the 9th. That's good. I'll give the rest to the council a few more minutes to continue browsing, and then, if you don't have any further questions, then we will entertain a motion to... Well, we're not adopting the budget. We're approving, we're setting it for public hearing on the 9th. Yeah. Is that what we're motioning for? What we're voting for tonight is to set it for public hearing, this budget?
Yeah, I don't even know that that requires a motion per se, but, you know, as long as we're good to go with these numbers to advertise.
Sure.
You know, once we advertise it, we can't raise any of the numbers higher. We can adopt lower than what we advertise, but it can't go the other way.
Do we, do we adopt it at that meeting after the public hearing? Or is it two meetings?
No, then September 23rd is the adoption meeting.
Yeah, there's gotta be a minimum of 10 days between your hearing and your adoption. So, if we're two weeks apart, we're good.
We did... I will mention briefly, for the benefit of the public, that we have had discussions with department heads that were able to find ways to shave other expenses to sort of reallocate some money already available in their budget towards an increase in wages next year to total up to more than $1,500 per employee. Those conversations, specific dollar amounts and negotiations are gonna happen over the next few months for the salary ordinance that's due to be passed by the end of the month. So, the money is available in this budget to hopefully work with, to be able to do that with. It's not an official commitment yet. That commitment happens with the adoption of the salary ordinance at the end of the year. But I'm grateful to all of our department heads for working so hard to find ways to put our people first. Thank you. Do we feel comfortable moving forward with this budget and advertising this budget once Corinne, the department heads, and then Baker Tilly have finalized perfecting the numbers?
If we have any questions on specific things, would this be the time to bring it up? Or should it be brought up in a later debate?
I would say it depends on a specific thing. If it's a budget item, then yeah, right now. If it's salary ordinance, then salary ordinance time.
Okay. It's item. I just, I had brought it up many months ago. But with the current challenges and a lot of unknowns, you know, we've talked about with things that the legislature's done, and the cuts that are coming for 26, 27, and 28, as far as what we get for property taxes. And that'll be continuing to get deeper and deeper cuts. Ways that we can try to save some money and at least, you know, keep our powder dry a little bit till we find out exactly where all those numbers come down. And just looking at, you know, anything we could look at for ways of trimming some. Keeping in mind, too, that, you know, other large expenses that we know are coming, you know, in the next few years, such as a new fire engine, it's gonna cost a lot. And what can we do to, you know, soften that blow a little bit, that sort of thing? One thought I had was on some of the vehicles, what can we do? One thought was currently, and not to pick on the police department, but you guys have a lion's share of the budgets. We have to look, you know, where we can help. Currently, we're replacing vehicles on a 3-2 schedule. And that's, those are pretty good line item chunks, you know, as far as total dollars. And in conversations we had before when Todd was chief, he had indicated we, in the past, have targeted 60,000 to 90,000 miles or so to cycle those out. And I was wondering what the council's feeling was. If we were to adjust that a little bit, instead of doing 3 and 2, what if we were to do 2 and 1, one less vehicle per year? That would save about 80 grand or so roughly, you know, give or take, each year to help give us a little bit of cushion. But Corinne expressed concerns that cushion, but all the variables are unknowns. So, that probably would push those vehicles to, what, probably closer to 100, 110, 115,000 miles? Which isn't too bad. I mean, most people probably put at least that on their personal vehicle, if not a whole lot more.
They do on a personal vehicle, but you gotta figure, these vehicles are idling for hours on end. You know, they're being, one minute they're sitting idle, and then they're in pursuit or running hot to a call. We're hard on the vehicles. We're hard on the brakes. We're hard on the engines. I'm sure most of you are aware, there for a while, we had a car in the shop pretty much every week. And my concern is with going that high on mileage is where we start to be nickel and dime. The ones that are, that have been in the shop are two, maybe three years old. And I understand, especially, you know, coming from the public, they might look at it as how I use my car at home. The police cars are just not used that way. They're ran hard, and we demand a lot out of them. To continue push them, pushing them longer, we could do, but they're gonna be in the shop more, right? One of the reasons that I know we've traded them in relatively soon compared to, say, state police, for example, is that trade-in value that we get back on them is substantial as opposed to waiting, you know, longer with the vehicle and then going to take a seven-year-old Durango that has 100,000 miles on it, we're not gonna be getting much back for, so. And that's the primary function of how our vehicles circulate. To bring up, or just to touch on what you brought up about the 3 and 2, there were some hiccups with the way that it's been done as far as what all was in that line item that went to the vehicle outfitting. There was some confusion about, well, what equipment is quoted in that? One of the things that I've discussed with my liaison, Ann Corinne, is to drop to two vehicles every year. And then, that line item budget for both vehicles would be the entire cost of the outfitting. So, it's a one-stop shop. It's streamlined. There's no, you know, well, CCD is gonna pay for this much of the vehicle, and then I'm gonna cherry pick through my budget on the camera system and the radios and all of that. But, you know, obviously, it's no secret that the budget is what we're concerned with. And we're already taking steps as far as looking at different radios that cost almost half as much as some of the ones that we're putting in there. Recycling as much equipment as we possibly can to cut down on the price of a new console or the price of a new push bumper. So, we are actively seeking that. I would not recommend 2 and 1, but 2 and 2 still saves a car every other year. But that's essentially what I've decided so far, so.
Craig, the 2 and 2, is that factored into your numbers currently?
We have, the plan for next year is to get two vehicles, so that's factored into next year. I mean, I have not looked at what's beyond, right? I mean, there are things, you know, if we're paying it from CCD, you know, CCD revenue is, well, it's affected by tax caps, which are gonna increase, but it's also directly tied to the rate that we set, which is now 5 cents, in our certified net assessed value, right? So, if our net assessed value does not increase, you know, not 2026, but in 2027, that amount's gonna flatline, right? If we lose assessed value due to homestead credits, 2%, you know, credits that have been added to the bucket, et cetera, that number could be reduced, so. I just, we don't know right now what the future holds. But, you know, I do think, you know, some of that money could be saved for a fire truck, right? We may need to look at a general obligation bond when the current one expires in a couple of years. But that money can be used for other purposes, right? Other vehicles for the park or the street department or whatever. Whatever the case may be. Right? Other capital purchases, building improvements, you know, HVAC systems, whatever.
We've been on a 3-2 schedule for, I don't know, a number of years. And this year, we bought two. Next year, we buy two. That's a new reduction. I'm not opposed to baby-stepping the reductions to see how it goes. But I've said it a million times. I'm happy to have our people drive it till the wheels fall off, if that means we don't have to lay anybody off. So, the stuff goes first. But just a little bit of stuff this year, right? Just rough, man. Okay. Because Parks needs a truck.
Parks needs a truck.
Parks needs a truck.
Parks needs a truck.
Okay. More questions?
Nope, nothing else said in here. Any other thoughts on it or not?
Thanks. Anybody else? No? Okay, we can just do a simple all-in-favor vote. If everybody's in favor of publishing this budget. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Okay. Corinne said she'll comb through the numbers one last time before sending it over to Baker Tilly. Obviously, if Baker Tilly sees any reason to make adjustments, they will let us know. Everyone will be informed immediately.
They've already looked over everything that I have in there and the budget advertisement, but just for, you know, extra precaution, I want them to do one more.
I appreciate the extra caution. All right. Next, we're going to move on then to ordinance 2025-09, amending and restating Section 38-6A for the Dunland Emergency Regional Dispatch Center Operations Center Management Board. Such a big title. I did speak with Sharon Jernell about, Jim, the concern you brought up two weeks ago about having an even number of board members. What happens if there's a tie vote? How do we secure a tiebreaker? After talking to Sharon, she and I both agree, and, you know, she said that she'd double-check with her counsel and attorneys, and they don't have a problem with the simple fact that the only reason we're even calling this board to meet is to receive an inter-agency debriefing, and it's not to make big operational changes or decisions like that. At the end of the day, if the board is split on Chesterton versus Porter on what to do next for a big decision like that, that is a divisive, controversial challenge that automatically goes to each respective council anyway. The board is not really equipped to make those decisions. The board is there for, to guide on daily operations. And it has essentially operated that each of the police chiefs, police chiefs, work together and coordinate daily operations. If there's a conflict or an issue, they bring it... If there's a conflict or an issue, they bring it to their respective liaisons, to their respective councils, come to an agreement, and it's worked that way for more than ten years. So she and I are both comfortable with just having the meeting without the need to make sure that we're equipped to break a tie in the extremely rare event that that might happen. So unless someone here has a problem with that and we need to stop and rethink it, we can take a pause, or we can motion to adopt.
Yeah, as we talked about it before, I'm, I'm okay with that, as long as our, our minutes reflect exactly what you just said. Just so that, you know, we get ten years down the road, whole, whole different slate of people that weren't a part of this conversation, and all of a sudden they're faced with, they have a split vote, and what do we do? At least they can, if they go back to the minutes, they'll see what the intent was at the time.
Fair. I appreciate that.
As long as there's some guidance. You just don't wanna have a situation where, at the time when there's a dispute, trying to figure out how to break the dispute, cause that gets really ugly real quick.
Right.
May, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Um, this, uh, was something that came up after a, a recent news article. Um, and I, I think it kind of solves this problem, is we have this regional board, uh, regarding the dispatch center and the dispatchers themselves, and, uh, what about having a liaison or another person that is a dispatcher as part of this, whether they're a liaison or, um, it, it would make it to where there is a tie, if there is a tie, I'm sorry, there wouldn't be a tie because it would be an odd number, so.
Which agency would that dispatcher work for and represent?
I've-
Porter or Chesterton?
That's, no, that's a good, that's a good point, and that might be something where between the department heads, we have a, you know, we have a representative that works for both agencies, cause many of them do.
Okay.
Just throwing it out there. They mentioned it, and I thought it was a good idea to have people who do the job probably helping with some of that.
I appreciate that. Something that Sharon and I also were very clear about is that these, while these meetings are not open to the public, they're open to whoever we invite. And so if I'm hearing from my police chief that, uh, appointing a dispatcher to represent the dispatcher's perspective during that meeting is something that you would like, then I'll ask her if they would like to do the same.
Perfect.
And I think inviting them would be a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Do we have a motion to adopt twenty twenty-five dash zero nine? No?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you. Um, on ordinances, I like roll call votes, so I appreciate y'all. Are there any more questions or concerns about this to debate before we go to a vote? No? Okay, Corinne, if you don't mind, please call a roll call vote.
Was that Jim on the second?
That was.
Don, okay.
Yes, I was second, I seconded, yes.
Thank you. All right, Don Kraft.
Aye.
Kelly Kierman.
Yes.
James Burge.
Aye.
Bill Lopez.
Aye.
Laura Madigan.
Yes. All right, thank you so much. That passes. Then the last thing we have under new business is Plan Commission's Assessment and Recommendations Regarding the Ball State Regional Landscape Design on Route Forty-nine and US Twenty interchange. Uh, Jim Burge serves on that Plan Commission, um, and I will thank him for presenting that recommendation to the council and the audience.
Yes, the, uh, tools that may not be familiar with the project, uh, was started, well, over a year and a half ago or so. Uh, the idea was looking at that property in that forty-nine, twenty interchange, cause it's, it's a very large chunk of property. Um, like, kinda smack dab in the middle of town, if you're looking all the way from Porter Beach to, uh, to downtown. What could we do to beautify it, make it look better, um, help, uh, cause it is kind of the, the welcome mat to the town. Uh, all of the minds, visitors that come to the, uh, to the dunes, uh, each year, they have to go through that interchange to get there. Um, so we're, we're still keeping, you know, a year to, what can we do to improve those, uh, tho- those aesthetics? Ball State, um, their College of Landscape, Landscape Architecture do, uh, free projects. It, it gives these students there an opportunity to do a real-life project. Um, municipality gets the services of their vision and their creativity without having to pay for it, so it becomes a win-win. So that's what, that's what we did, didn't cost us a dime. Uh, they came back with a lot of very creative ideas, um, a lot of things to utilize, not only that space, but also things, ideas we could use for improving downtown, the Porter Beach area, trails, all kinds of things, and how to make it all interconnected. So it was all, um, excellent content. We, after they present, made their presentation, um, we got with Endot and, uh, and had the discussion with them. And some of the, the things that the students said, proposed, um, they didn't want to, uh, to support it this time. The rules and regulations that they have to operate under are, are geared towards, uh, cloverleafs, you know, which are very different than what that diamond interchange is, both in size and layout and everything. But that's the rules that they're dealt with and what they have to deal with. So based on rules of a cloverleaf, some of those things would not be allowed, um, for safety reasons and, and, and other things. That said, um, the, the Plan Commission looked at all the different elements, uh, that they had proposed, and there's a lot of gems in there that possibly could be utilized, other parts of town, in the park system, et cetera. We might be able to do some of those things in other areas, maybe just not in that location. Um, so, uh, there's a lot there we wanna add to. Next time we make improvements to the comprehensive plan, we might be able to dovetail those in, and when things come up and there's funding that could help make those things happen, a lot of that vision work has already been done by the students of Ball State. That was my perspective. Brian and Jay, you're on, on there too. Any other additional thoughts and takeaways from, from our Plan Commission meeting?
I didn't know.
Okay.
I don't have anything to add. I, I, I just would say that the, uh, performance space was definitely something that has come up a lot in the last, probably, I would say, six to twelve months.
Mm-hmm.
So just having that included in that plan and, and having the Plan Commission state that, to look at that plan where we're making recommendations going forward is prudent.
Yeah, excellent.
Thank you.
Kelly, Michael, you're part of our original committee to help put all that together. Additional, any additional thoughts?
Well, just like, you know, there's some, there were some really good ideas for trails, future trails, and when we're working on the master plan for trails, there's some items we can roll into the trails. And, like, different pieces of that could be used maybe in park space or other public spaces, so it's got a lot of good ideas.
Okay, very good. Brian, your thoughts there on the, uh, on the amphitheater idea? Um, sometime maybe if we, if we wanna do a road trip down to North Judson, I go through there frequently, and in their park right there at Highway Ten and, and, uh, the crossroads there, it's relatively inexpensive, but they did a really nice job for, you know, not a lot of money to work with, but making a very nice outdoor area for everything from music in the park to music, you know, movies, music, et cetera. So I'd be happy to go if you ever wanna go down there and check it out and get, get information from North Judson and I'll be there.
I go down to Bailey's often.
Okay, awesome.
They got the best discount, they got the best discounted candy for park events, so.
Awesome, very good. That's all I have. Any?
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Uh, the recommendation letter that you all received in your council packet indicates supporting documents from the Ball State students, which, uh, failed to make their way to you in this packet. My apologies, that was my fault. I was supposed to secure the transfer last week, and I failed to get those. You should've already seen them over the months that this was presented, but I will make sure that they are all in your inboxes and that Corinne has a copy in town hall. Everybody's got a copy. Bye, end of business tomorrow. Fair? Thank you. Council comments?
I just wanna, uh, thank all the department heads for all their hard work on this budget. It's, I know it's really tough, and especially Corinne with all her work, you know, she's been pulling her hair out, trying to get it together and everything, so I know a lot of work went into it, and, uh, we appreciate that.
Thanks. I, I appreciate all the, the effort that the department heads are, are putting in. I know, um, the process has changed, you know, from what everybody's used to, so. Which I think is a good thing, right?
It's messy. It's good, but it's messy. I'm sorry that it's so messy.
More input, more brain power, right?
Yeah, that form was a lot easier.
What's that?
I said that form was a lot easier to fill out.
Oh, good. There you go. One improvement. Good. It wasn't a waste of paper.
No, wonderful. All right, anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Ask what?